Yes, he is.
He is.
Okay, so then we will call it to order. The regular meeting of the Region Nine Board of Education on May 21st at 7:02 PM. And the first item on the agenda is a consent agenda item for the approval of the minutes.
I think a motion, we accept the consent agenda, does that count?
Second.
I don't believe in the meeting. I love the efficiency.
You want to go fast, we'll go fast.
Yeah.
Sorry, I wasn't at that meeting, but.
Who's the first? First was the motion, and then who was the second?
Gwen.
Gwen, all right. There's one abstaining.
One abstaining, and there's a typo, but I don't want to hold up the consent agenda. There's a typo in the one of the papers.
Department, I think, somewhere.
Yeah.
And my name is.
Yeah, that's the typo that is.
And I also don't think that I ever withdrew that motion.
Yeah, you did.
I did?
Sorry, so where's the typo?
Sorry, I was wrong.
The typo was very lengthy.
Page three.
Right, which one?
It's on discussion, possible action, capital plan review, and potential revisions.
Okay.
At the bottom, lessons.
So I can't.
Thanks, y'all.
Okay.
All right.
As corrected.
As corrected. All right, moving on then. All right, we'll take those as corrected, and we'll move on then to item number three. Student reports.
Thank you. I'm once again happy to be here tonight to present a short and sweet version of the noteworthy news. I'd like to begin by immediately congratulating Duncan Martin and Carson Schick, who are CAS High School Art Award recipients. Carson Schick for music and Duncan Martin for art. Congratulations to both of these students because this award honors Connecticut's outstanding high school visual and performing arts students. These students have both done very well in this area and were celebrated. Congratulations to them. They were awarded on April 2nd. In addition, congratulations to Mackenzie Sickinger and Jackson Reben. They were awarded the 2024 CAS CAC Scholar-Athlete Award. Parents, school officials, teachers, coaches recently celebrated their remarkable accomplishment at the Off-White Turf. So congratulations to both of them for winning this prestigious award in athletics. Now to move on to the wonderful world of math, which might not be so wonderful in my math test tomorrow. The students participating in the math skills program at Barlow participate in project-based learning. Now recently, they took part in the Barlow Master Chef competition as part of this project. This required students to understand how math is used in cooking. Their objective was to use math to create a healthy edible breakfast dish for 20 people and presented to judges, including an expert in the field, Chef Kennedy from JBHS Chartwell's. Students did a phenomenal job, and in total, our winner took the prize for her vegetable frittata and sourdough avocado toast with field greens and spicy honey. I'm hungry. Now, to move on to the next item on the agenda. On Friday, May 10th, the freshman class council organized a dance to welcome the eighth-grade students of Joe Barlow High School. This is a key part of welcoming the new grade of freshmen in next year, and we'll make sure that they at least have met one person so that they aren't completely alone on their first day at Barlow. On Wednesday, April 24th, the Houstonic Resources Recovery Authority announced the 2024 regional winners of their contest. Congratulations to Maria Matic, a senior and co-leader of the Joe Barlow High School Eco Club, who won second place in the billboard competition for grades nine through 12. And for the final piece on our agenda, nine Joe Barlow students, who are talented artists, will be featured in the Teen Visions High School Arts Show, which will be held at the Art and Design Gallery at the Sacred Heart University from May 19th to June 6th. So if you want to support our students who are in the arts program, please go to the Art and Design Gallery at Sacred Heart University in order to show some support. In addition, there's a spring concert tomorrow in Barlow Palooza that are also this week if you want to show further ways to support the Joe Barlow student body. With that, I would like to close the noteworthy news. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for a follow-up?
Can I just add one?
Yep.
Jason, do you want to mention last night? Because we gave them the noteworthy piece before last night's award. Did you want to mention the two students? Do you want me to do it?
Go ahead, Kana and.
Anya, Kana. Last night, as every do every year, we celebrated. Every high school gets to select, and middle schools, two students that represent leadership. There's a bunch of different criteria, but each high school gets to pick two students for the Western Connecticut Superintendent's Award, or a better also is the Apple. And we got to honor two of our amazing students yesterday, Anya Kinar and Ronan O'Connor. Both seniors at Barlow have done some amazing things. Ronan's very involved in youth mental health, and Anya's been very well, besides being an amazing tennis player, who just won the conference championship yesterday, but we're not going to brag about her. But she's also very big with, she's involved in Soup Kitchen and bringing, they collect sandwiches here to do advisory and they deliver them to Soup Kitchen and Dambler. So both amazing students have done some great things. So recognition to those two seniors from yesterday. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Owen, you're, as always, welcome to stay. Watch the robot demo, or if you really need to go study for your math. And next time, we expect samples, though, of the food item.
I'll put in the word.
Yeah.
Or if you needed experts on the volunteer, the judging.
Yes.
I think I can make that work, yeah. Let me just.
All right, thank you, Owen, for your report. All right, we'll move on then to public comments. So if any member of the public would like to comment, you can come to the podium, announce yourself, name, and address.
Hi, Shirley Mel, Golden Road, Reading. I have a couple of questions. We went to the public forum a couple of months ago, and we were talking about timelines for this project and also cost. And I remember there was a sheet that said that they're estimating, or it was estimated, not by the engineers, $300,000 just for the septic line. Is that correct? Am I correct? That was on a piece of paper that was handed out. It was actually a pamphlet. How much money do we have for this project, number one? Can anybody tell me that?
Sorry, Shirley, it's not a Q and A, so it's a public comment. So if you'd like to ask your questions, that would be fine.
I appreciate that. My concern is cost. And the amount of money that's been fundraised. Is there enough money? Or are the taxpayers going to be absorbing all of this either through the Board of Education or some other entity, the town of Reading and Easton, I would hope? The other question I have is the issue with where you're going to place this septic line. I hear baseball field, I hear septic line going through the softball field. Does anyone, or maybe I can't ask that question. I would like to know where you're going to start this line and where it's going to finish and how it's going to get up to the top of the hill. There was a concern that I raised a while ago about pumping this stuff up. And I'm interested in knowing how this is going to function and how much disruption it's going to be, not only for the athletes, but also for the community that's down there. The quality of the water, the environmental impacts, are there going to be resources that the public at large can access so that their concerns are assuaged? Because there are a lot of unknowns here. Are there going to, I've been asking, I think my husband asked Mr. Johnson about how you're going to protect these lines? How are you going to protect the water lines? If there's spillage, if there's leakage, what kind of monitoring are you going to be putting on this? Is this something that is going to be encapsulated in the bid that you're getting? Because that's very important to me. And I guess my other question, or my comment is, and it is a comment, not a question, the speeding on Turney Road. The speeding on Turney Road is horrible. It's not only the students who don't stop at the stop signs and pull out willy-nilly, not looking to the left and right, but there also is a lot of traffic. I'm sure there's going to be a lot more traffic when this project is completed. And I want to know how you're going to handle it, because nobody pays attention. And I know speeding is an issue in Reading, per se. But we're talking about a residential neighborhood here. You take your life in your hand when you creep out. Because those kids don't stop. Speed bums don't stop them. Speed bumps don't stop the adults. I dare say, I'm wondering how many suspensions have been damaged because of the way they fly up and down the road. So I think that you need a traffic engineer in this project to figure out what you can do to minimize the harm to the public. And it's not only, I mean, it's not only the small community I live in, but it's also if somebody's coming out of that parking lot and somebody's coming down the road, these kids just fly out of that parking lot, you could get broadsided. And if parents have young children in the car, there are consequences. So the red flag goes up again, and we've been talking about this for a while. How are you going to minimize the amount of danger when you add all of this extra stuff and you want to use this thing 24/7 to the residents and also to the public at large? I am concerned. Almost got broadsided a couple of years ago from somebody flying down from the parking lot. It's not a pleasant experience. Turns your hair gray. So if those things can be incorporated in your project and you can get a traffic engineer in here to see what can be done, I'd certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Shirley, again, thank you for your questions. There is an update on the NESTS project later on our discussion possible action items, so we'll probably address some of your questions there. Maybe not all of them, but we do have that later on. All right, no other public comment then? We'll move on to board member comment.
I just have a quick one, since we have learned about some changes in Central Office, and we're going to be, I just wanted to take a second to acknowledge Stephanie and her many years of service. And just also to say, you know, that you will certainly be missed, and you and I do go back 17 years, so it's a little different for me. But although it will be a sad departure for us, I feel like if this had happened two years ago, I would have been like in a cold sweat. Because you have been our institutional memory over the last many years of many, many changes. And I feel like now we are finally in a good place with Jason and Sarah that if we win, we lose that, although they're going to still have like your email address, Stephanie. That when we, but seriously, so when you do move on, that we're in a really strong place right now, and I don't know if I would have felt the same way about it a couple of years ago. I just think that Jason and Sarah are this, far and away, the strongest team that we've had in those two jobs in really pretty much the two decades that I've been watching folks in those two jobs. And so many thanks to Stephanie. We'll get, we can get super gushy at the next meeting, but I just wanted to throw that out there now.
It's a preview for next week.
Yeah, yeah, it's a preview. It's a preview. We're going to do it for like half an hour next time. But also just nicely done, Jason and Stephanie. Jason and Sarah for making us just, we're really going in a good place right now, so that's all. I just have good things today. I'll be cranky next month.
Second, and yes, we'll have her on the next agenda.
Yes.
I do want to add something, because when I thought about saying something as well, and I was like, oh, no, we still have June. But I do want to say, Stephanie, during the pandemic, having been a board member who served during the pandemic, you were a rock. And the continuity was just phenomenal. And that is literally, I never want to live through that again, but thank you for, particularly for those years of service during that very interesting time in education.
Yeah.
Wholeheartedly agree. More to say in June, but absolutely. And, you know, you look at all of the districts, every district was encountering the pandemic in crisis mode, and every district put their top person in charge of it, which meant the superintendent in every district except for one. And it was ours, where we had you as the key person doing that, and you helped us get through that absolute crisis and sort of, you know, reduce the trauma that we're inflicting upon parents and students and teachers and all that. So more to say in June.
Other board member comment?
Waiting until June.
Okay. You don't have a comment now on that. Well, that until June. Anything else? All right. Then we will move on to administrative reports.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Much more to say in June. Go there just yet. We do have a report from Sarah. However, that is in the discussion and possible action area of the agenda. And we do have a report from Dr. Ameda, and that is also in the discussion and possible action section of the agenda. So for now, we could hear from Stephanie and also from Mike for an update. Stephanie, why don't you, would you like to go first? Or Mike, would you like to? Whomever.
Well, my report this month is in part a response to, there was some request for some additional curriculum information, which I, on an annual basis, provide at the end of the summer, but I have shared with you two different things. The first page shows the major K through 12 curriculum initiatives. So those are the things that I oversee when it's a more significant curriculum revision. So you can see K through 12 art and music, K through 12 social studies, and K through 12 physical education. Health and wellness provides you a timeline and some information about that work. We are very close to wrapping up the art and music component of that due to the changes that were planned more recently in Region Nine. That work will take a little bit longer to get finished here in Region Nine. I anticipate that Easton and Reading will discuss and possibly approve those curriculum revisions next month. On the pages that follow, you can see Region Nine plans summer work. The two columns for budget, one shows the location in the budget. I know that can be a little bit confusing. So if it's curriculum and instruction, that's the curriculum instruction tab. That's the work that I oversee. So typically in Central Office, I will plan the larger district initiatives that include multiple districts, or at times if I'm coordinating in particular work between districts. So in Region Nine's case, that would be eight to nine transition planning, and if there's curriculum work that is specific to that. If it says STEM, that's obviously the STEM department, or counseling, or humanities. You can see the budget amount that has been estimated for that work as well as the time. All of those are estimates. When we plan the budget, it's really our best guess at how long we will be working and what the work will entail. I don't, I never plan to completely drain the line at the end of the summer, because we want to have enough flexibility so that if teachers need to continue the work during the school year, sort of after-school hours, or in June of that next year, then that's possible, and that often does occur. Happy to have any questions. Crazy little boys.
logistical questions and saving commentary for June. This all being carried out in July and August, who's going to oversee that from the Central Office perspective in your presumptive actions in July and August?
So it depends on the work. So the social studies work includes a consultant that we've been working with now for the past year, and I am working with her and with Angela Starin, our humanities chair, to identify the date. As Dr. McKinnon knows, I am absolutely here to support the transition. So I will be available to the extent that the districts need me to continue that support in person, remotely, whatever it might be. Most of the work that's earmarked here will be facilitated by others, and I will step in as needed.
And then a similar question with respect to the counseling work. How does that work into a transition with the department head in counseling?
Right, so the counseling work in particular, let me get to that portion. I believe that we're talking about MTSF, if I remember correctly.
Wellness classes?
It's the last one.
Refined lessons on wellness?
Yeah, yeah. So they're looking at, in particular, the, in some case, the PE, health, and wellness standards that have been more recently updated, as well as castle and state SEL standards. So they will be looking at how those new standards can inform lessons that they provide in classrooms. I would anticipate that our new director of counseling will participate actively in that work, but that work has already started. So I'm not concerned that because of a transition, it won't happen.
So all of this work can continue even in transitions and leadership? There's not a concern around that?
Absolutely. And actually, I was with the high school team a couple of weeks ago, and Mike Santangeli was there, and we were discussing this, so he will be involved as well as the leader of the wellness portion of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. D'Agostino? One second. Which one, which one is you?
The grease.
Pink joy. So, yeah, the opening page, a little homage to Inside Out, the superintendent's movie night this past Friday. We did Inside Out, and again, been pretty consistent, you know, 87, 88 people there, students. And it's just a great thing, and I just wanted to do that for Jason, because he puts a lot of time to work in that. And it's really been great. The community comes out, we give them free popcorn, they watch the movie. It's really kind of a great atmosphere, and then he packed up and went off to senior prom, so busy night for him, but anyway.
Just, let's just stop there for a second. Every superintendent movie night, maybe we should call it superintendent and Mike movie night, because you've been to every one, and you and Tony are in charge of the popcorn. We have an amazing new popcorn machine. If you've seen it, it's bigger than the podium. We can crank out a lot of popcorn.
There's a town ordinance that you can't have a performance in Reading without at least one D'Agostino there.
So we were thinking about this, and I think we've run into, you know, calendar schedule challenges, and hopefully we can schedule some movie nights next year and some matinees and so on. But what we were thinking about is, for a lot of families, and particularly a lot of young students, it's the first time they've come to the high school.
Yep.
And now it's not.
Yep.
And so if we can do that more, make that more successful, we can. Now, who is the other character? This is an Inside Out Two character?
This is a new emotion?
Yes, so. It's just to be tricky. June 14th, Inside Out Two premieres. So a little promo for Disney for using their stuff, but yes. So yes, Riley, which also happens to be my daughter's mom, to my Riley.
That's why you put that on there.
Needs some choreography.
Riley goes off, gets older, and she's in middle and then high school, so different emotions and different adventures, and so yes, Inside Out Two, June 14th.
Is that anxiety possibly?
Anxiety.
Correct. So anxiety starts to creep in with teenagers? Is that what you're saying?
Envy, embarrassment, and envy.
That's weird. That's the times, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so just wanted to give everyone a little update on, obviously, the weather has turned, and I'm sure board members have been a little concerned. So we did install a pH adjustment polyphosphate feeder system, which actually addresses all of the potable water in the school, but it raises the pH and creates water that's more conducive to our copper piping and our equipment, as well as, you know, raising the pH in general to make it, you know, a better quality water and less caustic. So we have installed that system. Little picture of it there for you. And then next, there is our replacement train chiller. And we were able to put the chiller into service on Monday, just in time for the, unlike the heat wave that has come this week. And so there's a little picture, it's kind of hard to see, but it says 69 degrees, and that's one of our classrooms. So chiller's up and running, doing what it's supposed to be doing, and we're very grateful that we were able to get that in in time before we hit a real heat wave. So again, we have, the second chiller is in process of being re-tubed, but for now, we can, we should be able to provide for the conditioning needs of the building barring, you know, a, you know, midsummer heat wave of 90-plus. We should be fine to get through the end of the school year. And last slide here is just a little summary. So that was the cost of removing and replacing chiller number two. We were able to get that covered by our insurance. The second item there is the cost to remove the barrel in chiller one and re-tube it and reinstall it and charge it and get it back into service. And we were able to offset the majority of that cost with a grant, HVAC grant, that Mr. Griffani helped me obtain. And then we have total restoration costs, and that's the overall cost to the district, which is $6,493.20. And we were able to cover that through the operating budget, which we budget yearly for HVAC repairs and those. So we were able to bundle some of them in order to cover the costs without asking for additional requests.
Has the outlet been refunded by insurance back to the capital account?
Well done, team.
Just my, my comment on this is, this by no means was a done deal six months ago. And at one point, we were worried that we would be responsible for far more costs than you see in this table. And Central Office is a small place, and we can hear Mike's voice down the other end of the corridor. And in fact, sometimes people actually have to go and close his door. We heard him on the phone for hours and hours over a period of weeks and weeks with multiple vendors, the insurance company, train, and so on. And I think in the end, he did an excellent job recouping these costs and just wearing everyone down. And that is a remarkable story. And also, the installation of this system, they may look like small cups on the picture. They too are the size of the podium. It's an incredible system, and we've had water quality issues here for decades, perhaps. And I think this system may actually improve kind of the quality of the water so that it doesn't damage our equipment in the future. So just a great work. Thank you. And that's what we have for administrative reports.
The budget object summary and costs and benefits.
That will be covered under D.
Cover later in D.
Yes.
Cool.
All right, so that then concludes administrative reports. We'll move to committee reports. I just added this on because I know the committees have been active, and I know some of them will probably present in DPA, but if any other committees, any chairs want to report?
I'll do a quick update for negotiating committee. So the joint negotiating committee met this morning, and I'm talking because I drew the short straw and the. And the chair of that committee, once again, we went through the open contracts, and Dr. McKinnon helped us understand sort of where we're at and what sort of his recommendations are. The committee will meet soon to discuss our position, come up with a strategy, and hopefully get back as soon as humanly possible. Make sure that we're in time for the June special meeting that I think is scheduled for, for the three boards, so that we can finalize anything there. We also took some time to evaluate our position with regard to Dr. McKinnon's contract, and I think we, we had a really fruitful discussion, and we're able to sort of advance the ball down the court. And so good, good on that, that front. And then briefly on the curriculum committee, we met on April twenty-third. Had myself, Chris, Mary Lee, Kathy in attendance, as well as Dr. Pearson Ugo, Dr. Alameda, Julie Meteg, am I saying that correctly? Meteg, good, thank you. And Dr. McKinnon and Mr. Testa in attendance. The two big things on that agenda were the approval of the new AP chemistry textbook. So, you know, there's a sort of recommendation, and frankly, a need to do that, because the, the old one's at its sort of end of life with relation to support for the digital versions and, and all of that. So it was a fairly straightforward conversation. I think it was sort of unanimous recommendation from all involved on the, the administration and sort of the education side, and seemed self-evident that the, the, the choice that they suggested, which was a chemistry AP edition, eleventh edition, by Stephen Aszumdal et al. Be adopted, and so good conversation there. And then we had a, a sort of deeper conversation about a, a selection of curriculum committee agenda topics for the future. So we called it a sort of planning matrix. And it was primarily driven from suggestions that came from the committee members to say, hey, what's everything that's on your list? But it's meant to be a living, breathing document, where we're asking Dr. Alameda and Julie, and, 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 you know, obviously asking Stephanie and, and Dr. McKinnon, sort of everybody, say like, throw in there. And we, so we started with twenty-one items. We went through that list to just make sure that we all sort of understood, what do we mean when we say college placement analysis? Or what do we mean when we say math curriculum pathways? Or what do we mean when we talk about STEM Academy curriculum? And so we had a really nice conversation there. It felt like coming out of that, we had a, a, sort of a good momentum for, oh, cool. Okay, we, we have a sense of what's in front of us. There may be a few more things to add there, but now it's time to prioritize and say, what are we going to take up first? What are the things that are important for us to dig in on? A little bit, the Stephanie's departure is, is putting a, a sort of a beat there, because we want to make sure that we're sort of be mindful of what we take on next, and that it makes sense to do it with the timing of any, any other new folks that are coming there. But we're really committed to sort of continuing the momentum and making the progress, make sure that we're getting all of the stakeholders' input there. So that's my update for curriculum committee.
Just like to add that the administration, including myself and Dr. Pearson Ugo, Dr. Alameda, actually met two times after that meeting to delve deeper into some of those topics. And you identified your top five, and we looked at those items, and we also looked at the items that didn't make the list and said, what are the ways in which the administrator, the administration can meet some of those objectives as well? So we're also working on the backend. Felt like there was some good momentum there. And we've got some ideas as well that we'd like to share, and some good news about some potential pathways that we saw as opportunities.
Awesome.
And do those priorities, as well as the table items, are they, how do they map to the strategic plan?
I, I think they map well to the strategic plan.
Yep. That's, that's kind of the whole point, is to say like, everything that's on our mind, let's get it out there, and then let's prioritize it in, you know, sort of relation to what we've said. We're, you know, so the point in space we're trying to, to get to.
Any other?
The joint policy committee met twice. There's a recommendation for the tri-boards, we'll talk more about it in a second.
Excellent, thank you. And think, you know, I was just looking, I think all of our committees, since we have just two, F and O and Curriculum, they've all formed, had a chair. The building project obviously is going on. And then in our joint ones, by my count, since Policy has formed, and Chris is the chair, Negotiating today has formed, John's the chair. I think the only two by my count, I think, are the Joint Wellness and D E I. I don't think they.
I think there was Callan, or I'm sorry, that's now operating.
Yeah.
Which, which one, D E I?
I mean, D E I and Wellness, there was a conversation about whether Wellness would absorb it, and there was going to be a question as to what the requirements around Wellness were. I don't know where that fell off. That's my recollection.
Yeah, I think that's still where we're at, why those two haven't been accounted for.
Yeah, we didn't finish. That's right.
Out of that, so, yeah. So by my count, I think we still need to sort that between the board chairs and get those two committees, joint committees going.
Yep.
For reconstitutes, you can have a rep to do that.
That's right.
Very good. So we'll end administrative, or sorry, committee reports, and we'll move on to item eight, which is discussion possible action. Item A, the first one, the Barlow Robotics Team Demonstration.
Okay. Time for the main event. So, hello everyone. We're going to start by introducing ourselves, and then run through a short presentation, and then run and give you a few details. So my name is Alexander Weiss. I'm a current senior at Joe Barlow, and I've been the co-cap on the team for two years now.
Hi, my name is Emphos. I'm a senior. I've been on the team for the past three years, and co-cap, and the chair head of code slash control systems.
Ms. Angela, I'm a junior. I've been on the team for three years now. And currently, we head of code slash control systems.
Hi, I'm Randy Rivera. I'm a sophomore at Joe Barlow, and this is my second year, and I'm head of McGann Systems.
So the team has been around for?
Next slide.
Okay, go to the slide. Next slide. All right, so the team has been around for thirteen years now. Last year, we called our tenth year, just because COVID sort of messed up the season.
Ten, we were planning for thirteen.
Twenty thirteen, so.
It's okay.
And eleven, okay, anyway. So this year, we had a large influx of freshmen, twelve members out of our total of twenty-two. We had a lot of seniors leave last year, as I said, but gave a lot of freshmen, did a lot of teaching over the season. At our competitions, we placed at Waterbury and Hartford, which was the semifinals. We placed in the end of third place and fifth place. Sorry. And we actually won the imagery award at Waterbury to recognize for engineering design and overall logo look, raw, neon green, thirteen.
And this is, this is the first time that we've been, that we've qualified at both competitions in all of our, in all of our years, and first time that we have ever been chosen in the first round of alliance selections.
To add to that point, the way the alliance selections work is there are the top teams, and the top team can choose to take a lower ranking top team to join their alliance. And the nice thing that's, was offered a chance to join a higher ranking team, but turned it down to accept us onto their alliance, which was really helpful for us, because we would rather do this than someone better than us.
Good, excellent. All right, so here's a robot. We named it Chompy. Sort of thought it was an alligator, G-Rex sort of thing. So we have a few different subsystems. The main one you see up front, this is our shooter system. Actually, could enable the bot and bring it up? Like a shoulder one, it's a little easier. Give it a second, enable, but.
Next slide is the shooter.
Yeah. So our shooter setup, we'll bring it up in a second, but.
I have a phone disk. So this year, our competition was music theme, so these are called the notes.
So these are notes, they get taken by the bot, they're intake, and then it's like, into our shooter. Did it name it?
It did.
Good. And bring it up to drop. Actually, let's go to.
Source.
What? Source. All right, so this is our.
Sounds like you're a freshman.
Underneath. All right, so we have our shooter up top, shoots these notes. I'll let you intake, go ahead. Intakes it, and we have two privileges right here. You guys want to see the look later, yeah? All right, bolt's on, and then we're able to shoot. Can you put it on the speaker? That's fair.
So speaking of guys. The highest goal that we have, so it's straight to high. We practiced earlier, we got it.
We're going to try again. So Angela, I want to explain this. This is an equal tag.
These are equal tags, so basically, to our code that we use in the games around the field that we play on, and we use them to identify where we are and aim at different targets. So this one is the one that we have for the speaker. And these two cameras on the side of the robot here are looking for those positioning, do some trajectory.
Yeah. Especially that one.
Ian. Yep.
Oh, gosh. Maybe they got a favor. I played this earlier to change that.
Yes. And we'll test that again in a sec.
We proved earlier that it does work. Yeah, after our competitions, we've been doing some work to improve on some of those competitions and competitions that we have coming up, but it's not fully implemented as we've seen.
So the shooter itself is on the whole elevator assembly we have here, we bring it up to, yeah?
Anyway.
Yeah. We're on an whole elevator assembly, so we can actually shoot down, up, or pretty much anywhere we want. So we can go down over here, turn towards you guys. This is one of our game pieces, we get to shoot down into it. And we actually worked pretty successfully. I think we were like seventy, eighty percent of the time, everything was tested getting in, versus the speaker, which was the on-top target. Can you move to the next slide? Ah, cool. Yeah, let's start the elevator, right?
Just to point out some things on the elevator. All of these metal bits here that are attaching to the upper part of the elevator or to the shooter itself, we're using our CNC, which is, I don't know if you've ever had it, but it's a super, we use it all the time, every day. Alex is like our, as an instructor, had that. But it's like, it's a big tool, and it was expensive, but it's so valuable to the team to have to kind of things. Some of us in our workspace as well at school.
Yeah, so as Angela said, a lot of these parts are custom-made. Like almost everything you see, except for maybe the aluminum extrusion, that's all custom. A lot of it was CNC machines, either on the router or the mill. We have a twelve lock CNC mill, I've been learning this here. Or we have the router, it's called a stinger three. But I'm able to cut through these quarter-inch aluminum plates to build whatever design we want. In two places, this is for gearboxes, other places, this is the elevator. It works out pretty well. I'll drop it on the floor while we continue. What? Yeah, next slide, keep going. Randy, will you do the intake?
So next is intake action, we shoot out, and then we can intake.
Uh, drop.
Uh, eject it or?
Yeah, eject it.
Which?
It's not actually in the box in the back, so just straight to put it drop.
Oh, okay, cool.
Wait, wait, hands up. Drop.
It worked.
All right, floor.
So this year, we wanted to be able to pick up the notes, oh, please, the notes from the floor, not just from what we call the station, where, when it's positioned up, it goes in. So this year, we made what's called the floor intake there. You can see a picture of it, and same, same idea, how everything, all the side plates were built by Alex. And they're all custom-made with their CNC, and it wouldn't really be possible without it, because otherwise, we don't have the materials to do, we don't have any machinery to make it. And if I want to try to.
Straight in. And we can do this while running twenty, twenty-five miles per hour across the field, and we also have object tracking. So we have a camera right up here, so when we have the note out around here, and if you just, you just look a little towards it, press the button, speed towards it as fast as possible, it'll track it, catch it right in, and keep going across the field. Makes it very helpful when you have six other bots you're competing with for, for the notes.
And the drive likes going very fast.
We need to go very fast.
Yeah, so actually, next slide, yeah.
Yeah.
So our most impressive man, I feel like we're, we were very excited for it this year. It's called Swerve Drive, Alex is going to pass out, it's called Swerve Module. This.
Oh, yeah, so there's lithium grease on here. It's not dangerous, but it's, it'll get all over your hands, so don't touch the inside of the gears.
Just touch the metal.
Also, it's like, so how Swerve works is you have two separate motors. In this case, Neos, but we have Krakens. They're high-powered brushless motors, they're about two hundred apiece. And one motor controls turning in this way, and the other motor controls actual rotation this way. And this allows us to turn any way we want at any point. Can we run the bot around a little, just to make it show?
Yeah, so with a traditional like car drive, driving forward or reverse, or having Swerve drive allows us to rotate any way we want. So just really helpful for maneuvering on the field, and you can just like turn around in one place while also moving to another location. At the same time, sort of makes us faster, more agile. And it was really helpful. Last year, it was something that we did have, we struggled with. I think it was probably the biggest improvement that we had this year. Oh, yeah. We said we were super excited about having it, and it will, you know, will transform the way that we perform.
Yeah, the whole system, we actually applied for a grant with ELF about two years ago, got this funded. The whole system's about five thousand dollars, so just the base. Home robots crawling around, swell. Just the base system, that's worth five thousand dollars. We're looking to acquire our own system for next year for just general testing. So we can, we'll first keep this bot together for previous years, for future years, so we can use it for outreach. We go out to the community, we do a bunch of stuff for the libraries, schools, other places already STEM fair. Oh, yeah, sorry, I'll, I'll talk about that later. Must be great to have it around as a training tool, so we're looking to invest into another Swerve Drive mixture.
So vision auto, this is more I'm in eyes territory. The most important part is the code stuff. So you can see that first image on the left is an illustration of what our vision system sees. So those are the equal tags, and you can see that it's using that to calculate where they are, what angle they're at, and it allows us to, our way they are, and all sorts of stuff that's really helpful for positioning ourselves on the field. We use a different vision system this year, and this is going to be well. Yeah, I was, in my freshman year, the first person to get us using machine learning, the first student to go use machine learning in our vision system before that, we were just doing graphics. And I think it's been super helpful in everything that we do. There's a portion of the game called autonomous, where the robot drives itself, and so having this kind of thing is super invaluable. And it's something, a part of the game that's improved exponentially over the past year, so our team.
Yeah, well, yeah. Angela mentioned auto, so that's, that's my expertise on the team. So when I, when I was a, not, not freshman, I was COVID. Software, we started using this software called Path Niner, and you can see there in the, oh, yes, in the center. So essentially, you're able to place your robot in different points on the field, and you can like tell it to go here, and here, and here, and you can tell it to like run a command. So I don't know, pick up, pick up a note here. So it'll essentially convert what we want to do visually on this, on a visual map to coordinates a code. And it changes every year, mathematically, which is really fun, the relearning.
First has put more emphasis on autonomous driving and sensors the past few years, because it obviously has become much, much more important in the actual workforce as robots become autonomous. We've seen Spot the Dog, Boston Dynamics, it's now a inspector for a lot of factories. And all this stuff is just autonomous, it just goes around, you check, check one, two, three, all by vision, all by vision sensors. And first wanted to integrate this more into their own programs. So we have the fifteen-second autonomous period, as we use their paths and some other sensors, like the camera up front. In addition to just general autonomy during the match, which is auto-aligned. So we have different ones of code for auto aligning the robot to the main target. So this right here, we've been pointing this way, it'll turn that way to face the target, so we're on point. And it'll follow the note on the field when we need it. And that's it for Rob.
All right, so now we just want to talk more about just the atmosphere of the team. I just want, I was, it's just a family. We had our favorite last weekend, it was super fun. We all just hang out, girlfriends, and I think it's very good. Someone else will put that more eloquently.
Hello, I think that I've missed some of my best friends here. These guys, I'm, I think that I probably wouldn't be going to the STEM if I wasn't on the team. And the path that I, that I'm currently taking in life would have severely, would have been so different had I not been here.
And we'll do that on the next slide. Yeah, so we're going, uh, last thing in fact, this year, there are a link of our speakers like them. Yeah, so everyone, uh, last thing in fact, uh, this year, the link of our seniors like them said it. All of our seniors, our four seniors who are on the team, our Cody is planning on majoring in what they did on the team. So, uh, Sarah Gupta is going into business, and he was in our outreach department. Alex is doing mechanical engineering, I'm doing computer science. Uh, Nate here engineering.
Excellent.
Uh, Nate Norr is doing biomedical engineering. So, I mean, that's a hundred percent success rate. Coaching the people. So don't exist now. Uh, the picture there is two graduate seniors from last year who were on, in the coding department and are both studying computer science. All of our past leaders, almost all of our past leaders have gone into some sort of engineering fields. Uh, this team is just really informative for anyone who joins it. For just a great part of us to inspire students to pursue, and it's, it's wonderful.
You guys have any comments?
I want to answer the robot one.
Well, it's also, right. Next up.
Oh.
Right, so, uh, now what we're planning on doing on, for the rest of the year, now that our season is over, um, we're preparing for some Oxy competitions. Like I mentioned earlier, we are making some applications to the bot. Um, we have one called Merzow Plaid Competition that's coming up.
Uh, June night.
June.
June, sorry.
Um, sort of the fact for that. Uh, we're also looking at lots of outreach projects, uh, which includes, uh, promoting and improving our social media, which, which can, which we've, uh, followed on Instagram. Uh, and also we're planning visits to the middle school, actually earlier today, like an hour ago. We were sending some emails back and forth with Tom Heller, uh, about scheduling those over there. Uh, also, potential visits to the library, which Alice mentioned is something that we do. I'm curious about that. Um, and then also improving our, uh, community outreach for the engineering inspiration impact awards at our C. Um, and some things that we need to do for that are processing camps, we have a matching library, uh, which, also something that we can email you about, um, something that, uh, processing, by the way, uh, is basically visual programming language.
Yeah.
Um, which allows you to like do anything from render three D models to draw a painting. Uh, and we usually teach that and like some basic engineering, like that to like introduce a lot of new students for the summer. Uh, like I mentioned, we can go to a workshop, case of the EPL. Uh, and we're also looking to starting up an FLL team, which is first play will be, um, it's basically a mini version of a first team for the number students with legs.
Uh, what the, sorry, what engineering duration impact? So, those are the two most prestigious awards that first offers?
For whole teams.
Yeah, for whole teams. So essentially, it is how well you impact your community and bring first to, I guess, everyone. Typically, the people who win the impact are those who go to Africa, which is kind of a running joke, but it's not really, because it's actually what happens. Um, but we won engineering inspiration last year. At Waterbury? At Waterbury. And we went to compete at a district level, so that's all the. Yeah, for, for the, uh, just second level of that award. Uh, unfortunately, we didn't get it this year, uh, but that was because they, they want us to do more outreach outside of the, our two, or two small towns. So, that kind of leads us into the next slide. Yeah.
So, this is, uh, the fun part. We were whispering about this real here, because we think we care exactly about what you're looking for in terms of, um, my team. You guys, you know, you're already obviously giving us, I think, six thousand dollars for it. Is it? I think six thousand dollars.
Yes.
Historically, six thousand.
Yes.
Uh, which was going to cover our interest fees. Uh, this year, we, like Alex mentioned, are looking for a second Swerve chassis. Um, that's gonna allow us to practice more and better, the same way that we would be competing competitions. It's gonna allow us to do testing, even with the actual bots that finish, maybe preserve bots from past years, um, all of that. And so a second Swerve chassis, uh, could be wonderful. Um, and then also looking for our own trailer. At the moment, whenever we travel to competitions, which is like a two hour drive, uh, we pack everything into a trailer that we borrow from the Schubert family, which is very generous of them, but we would love to have our own and not have to constantly still stay. Obviously, trailers are an investment, so some money to help with that.
Yeah, money wise, that's good, but, um, I'll see you on the slide. Um, so, team wise, um, we actually have a bunch of people in code and mechanical. We're looking to recruit more students in our outreach department. Our outreach department has, so it's only two or three people this year. Um, we want to get that, we want to get a lot of people interested in outreach, because that's how we bring robotics to the community. That's how we get at the elementary school, the middle school level. It's how we get out of the town, get people interested in not only first, but just the STEM field. Because once they get into it, oh, we never leave, they do that. Um, yeah, that's just really our hope for the future, that's why we always want to support our outreach program. Our outreach program does more than just be support, it's also how we run the team. Um, the team costs somewhere around twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars a year. We get that all from our sponsors, we have a bunch of sponsors on here, we go out to the community, we even have, the Reddit programs is on there. They sponsor us a large amount, it's around five thousand, thousand dollars a year. And that's a really great support for the team. And that just, just shows how influential outreach is. And hoping that later this year, we're already on Instagram, have a website, probably get more out there, more community, more people interested. Yeah.
And it's also just, like, not everyone needs to be interested in STEM participating in this. Realize there is a limited number of nerds at Barlow. And while we would love to create more. This is a way to participate in the team and like, I don't like, there's FBLA, but it's not the same where you're like running business and creating, I don't know. It's another similar business opportunity, we're, if we're interested in that, can, are taking it at this point.
Do you know, do you know the size of the trailer? Okay, how many wheels does it have?
A two or four.
Or, it's tiny.
It's good, it's.
Two hundred cent. Yeah.
I think we have that number somewhere.
Yeah, we got pictures, we can show the dimensions.
Yeah.
Yeah, and also with all this like outreach, um, like going out to communities and libraries and different towns, um, a lot of our team members come from all these, like, in the summer camp, um, for a couple, for a few years.
Yeah.
And, um, with all that, I could get a lot of members, but a lot of them don't come in with a lot of knowledge. For example, code, a lot of people don't know code, and a lot of people don't know some basic mechanical thing. And, um, with like more resources, more tools, like an extra Swerve drive chassis, for us to explain, to show kids, new freshmen, even eighth graders that are interested. Because this year, we had an eighth grader come in every so often during build season.
Yeah.
For members to just look in, like, look at what we're doing and try to learn. That's also something that we had to do, because this year, we did a lot of teaching to the freshmen.
Yeah.
On how things are used, again, not many people know. And with more support, with more help, we can like.
Continue.
Be there.
Yeah.
Uh, and then, I guess the last thing on this, uh, school sport list is running FLL competitions. So, starting with the team, and FLL team, uh, like we mentioned earlier, is a big commitment. It requires to get like mentors, peer groups, and money. Um, and it's something that we are aspiring to, but it is, uh, definitely very long-term for all of us. Whereas running, um, off-season competitions, FLL could be a lot more tangible, uh, like you're gonna do sooner. Uh, and to, like, to put into perspective how much work that would be, FLL competitions, like their game field is the size of the team. So, it's really easy to put them to room this size or room the size of the gym. Uh, so it'd be a great thing to, that we would like to organize to have happen here at Barlow to help our team within those awards, but also encourage them.
Yeah, uh, for comparison, our field is fifty-two by twenty-six feet, plus another twenty-five feet on each side. So, it's a lo, it's a big difference, but it helps introduce anywhere from, I think it's third, sixth grade into STEM, get them looking into the PLTW classes in middle school, and then hopefully up to our team here, where we can, they'll learn. I mean, there's so many things in our team to do, like, for anywhere from, I mean, I'm on the mechanical side, so I love the machining, I love the designing. Uh, we use HU360, we do CAD, CAM. Uh, we even do electrical, we do diagramming, everything, like, it's like a mile of corded wire in here. It's like fifty thousand fuses, take a look inside our bots, all lined out really nicely. But it's all, a lot of work goes into it, and a lot of learning that we all have to get to. Like, I was a freshman, I didn't know, well, pretty much anything about this, I knew three D printing, that's about it. But now, senior going to K-13, so it's a really great program. Um, I hope we get a bunch more people in the coming years. Yeah? Um, you guys want to see us demonstrate a little more? Take a minute. Cool?
Questions?
We got headlines.
Oh yeah, questions? Before I do that.
I just want to say, I've been on Elf for twenty years, and we vote on a lot of the stuff that you guys, you know, use. We voted on the Swerve drive a couple of months ago, I had no idea what that was. But we were like, if they need it, we're gonna go. So, I, I'm very interested to see it, so, thank you.
Honestly, I'd say that having Swerve drive was kind of, it's not the entire difference, but it, it was the difference between getting into the semifinals. Without it, we would not have.
It was kind of something that we saw really good teams have, and how like us, we didn't, we didn't really have a ton, ton of money to, to get that. And with this, we kind of feel, we feel cool having it, because, because, I mean, not, not only did we feel like nice having it, it actually really helped us.
Yeah.
Right. Enabling.
Yeah, sort of quickly.
You have respect for it, you guys have the same enthusiasm, so.
That's okay. Alright, uh, well, doesn't want to work. Um, if you guys want to take a look at the robot, go ahead, we're having it off to the side, I'll let you all continue. Um, let me know if you have any questions. No, it's, it's, it's.
No, it's need to.
Yeah, that's gonna take a minute.
While they're doing that, can I ask sort of a practical question?
Yeah.
It might be more administrative focused. Um, I'm curious how robotics is considered, I guess it's a club technically, and how it is, there's sort of this byline funding in the budget for it to a certain extent. Do they also have any funds through student activity that can be carried over? How does their bank account work, basically?
Um.
Cause I know sports, sports teams get funding, and I have boosters that also support performing like similar. I'm just trying to figure out how it all works.
Same thing.
We don't have a booster, but.
Right.
We, they, they're their own boosters. So outreach, the outreach department of robotics is essentially their booster club. Uh, we've, the mentors have been talking about getting a little bit more formality and sort of getting more parents involved as boosters.
And does that money sit in it?
It carries over.
That was the big.
It does.
All the club money carries over.
That, yeah. And you want to make your roll on the same page as how the money works.
Right.
It goes through the student activity funds, right?
Yes.
So, some of it is subsidized by the board, and some of it is subsidized.
Yeah.
By the clubs, and, which is pretty typical for the way that we.
So the board effectively writes a check into student activity earmarked for them for X dollars, and then they can raise money into that, and then that's theirs to spend whenever they want to spend it.
That's right.
Yes.
Good.
Any questions about the robot or our system?
Any other questions or comments?
I guess I'm curious from you, and it doesn't have to be everyone, but if anyone can share, was there a particular experience that you had in your middle school years, or when you arrived at Barlow, either during the school day, through a course, a class, an after-school experience? Or maybe just someone in your life that really made you say, this is something I want to explore further?
Can I say this?
What?
Um, I was, uh, obviously, uh, COVID, uh, hit for my class at eighth grade. Well, started hitting my class in eighth grade. And I was one of the lucky few who was able to, who was able to take P L, I went to Keller, and I was one of the lucky few who was able to take P L to W in her first trimester. Um, so that, so that essentially meant that I was able to, so they, at, at Cal, at least Cal, I can't speak where they, um, they have a whole, like, the entirety of eighth grade and P L to W is just robotics. Well, I guess not the final project, but I did, I, I made a robot my final project. And that would, that really made me want to join the robotics team here. Actually, I was gonna join mechanical, and then I did the summer camp, but, um, that, I think that, for me personally, that was a just monumental experience, being able to, uh, make, design a robot, like, basically design a robot myself, build it myself, program it myself, make mistakes over and over and over again, and then have to stay until lunch to fix it. That, oh, that was for, 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 for my first experience with this. And then I was, or Angela and I were in the first iteration of the summer camp that the team ran, ran three years ago. And that's what really, that's what got me into code, um, and that's why I'm here on the team today.
Do you guys run the summer camp? I mean, do you help, do you help out at the summer camp?
Yeah, we all do. So, it's usually one of our mentors, um, and Mr. Pailwell, but like, we're probably doing most interaction with the students.
How many of you are, were at the summer camp helping?
So it's usually about, uh, twelve or thirteen of our students.
Oh, fifteen.
Yeah, it's about twelve kids there too.
For, for full transparency, there's a bit of burnout this year, and so we're, we're taking a break and resetting, you know, planning for next summer.
The summer camp is usually, um, like, run and instructed by students.
Okay, that's great. Quick question, so, how many of you are from Reading and how many from Easton?
Uh, Alex and I are Easton and we are at my.
Cause I was just curious as to the, the STEM programs leading into it, cause I know Reading has.
Both middle schools have integrated STEM programs. So Keller has had project lead the way for many years, as you know. And, uh, Reading has more of a homegrown program. Both programs, I think, have terrific strengths, and the two, um, teachers who teach those programs work both together, often create collaborative professional goals, and also work with Brian Pailwell here at the high school. So we've worked over the years to create sort of a six, six through high school kind of content. We've had some kickups with software licensing and access at the middle school level, but they often collaborate and then also participate in professional development together.
Of the freshmen, I think of those twelve new freshmen, I think it's almost a even mix, I think it might be like seven and, seven and five, so.
Yeah, there's really positive energy, I think, in both towns. I'm curious to hear from the students, also, you know, what we could do to continue to encourage that interest.
Also, to that point, I did the English class at John Green, uh, and that was part of the reason I decided to go into the team. Mr. K.
Okay, are you ready? Give it a round of applause.
So, uh, again, uh, thank you for bringing the robot and showing us the demo at the beginning there, and talking us through all the parts and, and, um, everything about the robotics club and what you guys are doing there. Also, the board would like to congratulate you again on your twenty twenty-four imagery reward, and being a first round pick at the New England First District in honorary competitions. So congratulations, it sounds like it was a, a very great year. We're glad you have some new parts and some exciting things, and, and have great plans ahead of you. So we look forward to seeing next year's robots or addition to this one, and all the great things that your group's gonna do. So we look forward to a demo next year, we always like.
Thank you.
This won't be long.
I will carry on to the next slide. Yes, you guys can go ahead and transport the robot out. And we'll move on to item B, which is the retirement plan, investment policy statement revisions. And, and I did notice it didn't go out in the materials again, um, so I don't know if you have had a chance, it's, it's been available, but I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read it, if they want to read it. Um, the pension committee has reviewed it, USI advisor, their council has reviewed it. Uh, and. Now we need some more funding for the robot. Alright, um, but, uh, Shippman Goode has reviewed it, USI advisor, their council has reviewed it. Committee has reviewed it, and, and it's, it's a policy statement that we just revise every year, uh, to make sure it's current with, um, you know, what we're doing as a pension committee. So, I, again, I, I realize, after I looked through all the PDFs, all the materials, I went out to the board members, you did not have it. So, um, the, the pension committee is making a recommendation to the board to approve the IPS. I don't think there's a deadline that we need, we just need to get it approved at the board level at some point. But all the, everything's been taken tight, so we can hold this over, um, and I can make sure tomorrow they send out the policy, or if people are okay with it, with all the work that's been done, we can go ahead and make a motion and, um, approve the policy statement. So I'll, I'll leave that up to you, because again, I would. So I'll leave that up to you, because again, I would miss not getting the statement out to everybody and we had this on the agenda last month. And it'd be getting it out and it didn't get out to you, so I will leave that up to the board, how comfortable you are of approving something you haven't grabbed or if you don't put that over. Perfectly understand.
I'm not comfortable voting for anything I haven't had the opportunity to read, so.
Right, the others feel the same?
Yeah, and just the facility, if you could give us track changes.
Yes.
Cause I, I read it like a few years ago, so I have an idea of what it is.
I, I don't know that the, the track changes are going to be an equal comparison from whatever you looked at a few years ago, but.
But they are tracked.
But they are, they are, they are tracked, but I, I'm not.
It is tracked, so you can see.
Sure.
Yeah, it may not be a one-to-one.
It may not be a one-to-one comparison.
But all the changes that were suggested by council and the committee made are tracked in there. So all right, so we'll, we'll hold this one over, then I'll table it. We will make sure the policy statement gets out.
Gets out.
To the board to review and we'll add this to the meeting. We'll try it one more time. All right, then with that, then we'll move on to item C, the NEASC overview.
Okay, so Dr.
I'm trying to pronounce that.
Yeah, this is NEASC and this is our high school accreditation. Dr. Ameda is gonna provide an overview of where we are in the process for NEASC. This item is informational only. You'll have a lot of opportunity and there'll be many more meetings and topics and presentations on, on NEASC. And this is just to kind of whet your appetite by an introduction. Included in this presentation is, again, an introduction of something called Vision of the Graduate. And similar to our strategic plan, when we developed a strategic plan, we started to socialize kind of what the strategic plan looks like. We are piloting and socializing the vision of the graduate whereby we'll be starting to introduce that to the community and asking for opportunity for input as to the vision of the graduate, which is a necessary component of NEASC. And so we're really introducing the two components together because they're related in that way. Again, future meetings, more opportunities for discussion. This is just an overview. Dr. Ameda?
I want to start by, Todd, saying thank you for sandwiching me, sandwiching me between the retirement plan and financial projections. I was following students, so thank you. I have a better chance between the three. I have no chance after that robot. I have no visual. Well, I do, but thank you for doing that. So, so as Jason said, I don't know about wedding anything. I just wanted to bring a couple of slides. You know, all of you have heard us mention NEASC. Some of you have been on this board, the old NEASC per se, when they would come, they would be here for three days, they would come on a Sunday. Board, community, family, teachers, they were all here. It's changed a little bit and I thought it'd be a good opportunity before the end of the year to just bring to your attention some of the changes, some of the work we've done and just the, the next tenure cycle. So as we've all heard, NEASC, again, is the oldest regional accreditation agency. They've done like sixteen hundred schools in, in, in the New England region. They do public schools, they do the Penn schools, they even now do international schools. We were recently at a conference in Mass where we were talking to one of the main founders of NEASC. He was saying they're working with schools in Dubai. So I'm like, wow, they're everywhere now. But that being said, NEASC, it, it's a really good look at a school kind of under the hood. What are the things we're doing? What are the things we're planning on doing? So, so to give you an idea of this tenure cycle, right now, we're in the self-reflection. It's a, it's a tenure process. And right now, we're in that self-reflection for twenty-three, twenty-four. It's like an internal self-reflection. It's the school's opportunity to look at the standards. There's five standards which I'll get into. How does, how do we view the school on those five standards? And again, and then next year, on November thirteenth and fourteenth of twenty-twenty-four, they'll be here for a two-day visit. And the purpose is for them to gather information about the school, the current condition, everything from facilities, curriculum, a little bit of everything. But what's nice about this new process, they're coming to speak to us and we're collaborating because we're the ones who rate, here's how we think we're doing with, with this standard. Here's how we think we're doing on that standard. Here's our strengths. Here's areas that we need to work on. So again, so the following year, excuse me, we continue to work on this growth plan after the collaborative visit. And then the big, big visits in twenty-twenty-six, so they're here again for, that's really the decennial accreditation visit. They're here for a few days. It's a much smaller team, by the way. It's no longer nine to ten people. It's usually three to five based on the size of the school. Then they'll give us a report. We'll use that report to kind of make changes or revisions to our school improvement plan. That decennial visit report will guide us to that new revised growth plan. And then again, we'll have opportunities for progress updates. And then again, the new cycle begins. It's like it never ends. We start a new process. But I just wanted to give you kind of a quick, and, and again, right now, as I said, we're in the self-reflection and it's just to determine the alignment to the five standards. Jason, can you go to, to, to the gears? Yep, to the gears, that one. So, I mean, if you look at this as five gears and these are the five standards, the gear that turns all the other gears, of course, is student learning. It's gonna build culture. It's gonna look at professional practices, learning support, resources, again, to help support and drive that main gear of student learning. So that's what NEASC is about. Jason, if you please go with the next one. Really quick, those are the, I'm not gonna read them. Those are the five standards that they look at, as I said, learning culture, student learning, professional practices, learning support and learning resources. If you go to the next one, I'm proud of this because this is student-created, a student-created graphic. Is it finalized? No. But I wanted to just give you a little history of how we got to this. So again, this was a student-created visual. We had three students, three sets of students, an artistic group of students, one that's more that digitally minded, and then a third group. And we asked them to, we basically gave them the five attributes that the students and the staff had voted that most reflect the skillsets that we're looking for when students graduate, whether going into the, into the workforce, into academia. And once we voted on these five, I asked the students to come up with a visual that they thought that they felt would reflect. This is the winning graphic. The only slight change we made, we started as a Barlow vision of the graduate, so there was a Falcon in the middle. And then we started thinking, we're not done. It was a good starting point, but we have to start thinking larger because we're a regional school system. So I kind of, I had the kids change that. The attributes are still important and I'll get into how the other two districts will help us. But I wanted to make this more inclusive. So I didn't want to make this the Joe Barlow vision of the graduate. We have work to do, but I needed something for the self-reflection, so I needed to have a copy of what we've done, so we went with this. Again, we had students that voted on it. We gave them all three samples that the three different groups did it. They selected this one. Again, with that little change of ER nine. And then I also had staff select which of the three visuals. So this is what we've come up with. And, and I came up with an example, these, how these softer skills, like what do they represent? So I started thinking, think of a student, for example, who might be able to do math that's needed to design a house for a client. But if that person can't communicate the ideas, work with others, reflect and problem solve, adjust and rethink ideas, then the process may, maybe even the results of the building, that house will suffer. So that's how these five, like, skillsets, whether you're going into the workforce, to college, are important. Again, the idea and these skills and these positions are just as important as the, the technical, the how-to. Again, we're working on the more global ER nine vision for the K through twelve alignment. Jason, if you go to the next one really quick, it's hard to read, but these, from those, from that earlier graphic, we came up with kind of more granular detail in the form of can-do statements. I know it's hard to read. I have to put my cheaters on myself. But basically, we came up with, we had the committee come up with, again, how does each of the five indicators competency look like? So we identified these I can-do statements. Jesus, even with cheaters, I can't. Again, all right, on the reflective learner, I can prioritize my time and plan out my tasks. I know how. So it was more of the specifics instead of just reflective learner. So this was an important piece that helped us get to that visual. We started with these I can statements. And then I felt that was important as a part two of that, of, of that vision of the graduate. And when we rolled this out to the other schools, it, every school, every level could identify those five. It may just look a little differently. So those I can statements, those core values, I think are as important as the graphic. So really quick, I just want to share some highlights. The next slide, please, Jason, on what we've done so far. So we had formed a NEASC staring and self-reflection committee. Kudos, kudos to Angela Stern, our humanities chair, and also Scott Rymold, one of our guidance counselors. Damien as well and myself. We are the four co-chairs, but really it's been Angela and Skye, Scott, that have been staring this. So we formed that committee. We completed NEASC surveys with both students, staff. You might have seen them because we sent home these, these surveys. We all have received training for the self-reflection report. The four of us recently, thank you Stephanie, approved and we attended a one-day conference where other schools got to showcase their work. We got to research. We spent a lot of time looking at area schools and what their vision of the graduate statements look like. We went as far as going, we really liked schools like Farmington, Simmsburg. So it wasn't just this geographic area. We looked at statewide. So we took a lot, a look at some of what the other schools have come up with. We presented that vision to key stakeholders and we're not done. We've done the students, we've done the staff, we've done PTSA, but we're not done. We know that we have to get this out to more community members and I'll get to that in a second. Again, student-created artwork and graphics. The student staff had an opportunity to vote on the graphics that reflect their values. We want to continue community stakeholder involvement and feedback. The faculty is now working on priority areas of growth for the collaborative conference. We have to submit before June, before the end of June, this self-reflection that I just recently shared with Jason and Steph. So it's not done, but based on the five standards, the committee, a group of teachers looked at, was assigned to each standard and how they felt we rated on each of those standards. So that self-reflection is due to NEASC on June and then they'll come and see, this is what you said, now let's see it. Then if you go to the next slide, and I know we're pressed for time, as I mentioned early, two days in November, the thirteenth and fourteenth of next year for the collaborative conference. Again, they'll focus on the school's current conditions, reviewing that report that we submitted, alignment with the foundational elements, validating the priorities for growth. And then again, other needed improvements to the standards. Again, the next slide, the school growth plan. I don't want you to look at this as a deficit model, but more of a growth model. Next one. Jason, click up. I don't want people to look at this as like a deficit model, but more as a growth model for improvement. Very similar to those that have been involved with like the tri-state. So again, it's, it's the purpose to outline a vision for continuous improvement. The plan's gonna include priority areas for growth, school or district initiatives. And then it could be integrated to the existing school improvement plan. Next slide, please. Then in twenty-twenty-six, as I mentioned, they'll do the big decennial visit. Then, I'm gonna skip that slide and I want to go to the last one just for next steps. The one thing I want to do before I leave, the kids leave for the summer, is we, we look back and said, we've communicated this to many stakeholders, but not a lot to the community. So I thought, what's the best way to get it out? PSA. So I have a few students that were involved in the committee who are working on writing a script, just very much like I've done some of this today, but have it done from a student voice. We could put it on the website and just talk about, here's what NEASC, here's what we're looking forward, here's what we've done. Here's our draft of the vision of the graduate. And I think that's the, the best way to, and I'm following Jason's model here because Jason loves to put stuff out and asks for feedback, so I'm hoping, again, by the end of June to have something on the website, that student PSA, public service announcement. And then at the end of that public service announcement, asking for feedback. Here's what we've done so far. Please reach out. We'll have like a, a link because we need feedback from them. We haven't heard as much from the community as we heard from students and from the staff. Again, invite more faculty and determining where the priority areas, get ready for that collaborative conference in November. And then we really need help branding that vision. So once we do that PSA and we get some feedback from the community, then we have to do the good work of getting that out. What does it look like at Samuel Staples? What does it look like at John Reed Middle School? Because this can't be just like a Barlow product. It may be the end product, but what does it look like down here? So I, I beg of you when you get five minutes to take a look at that example. You don't have to do it now, link. I kind of found that online. It's Farmington's example and Farmington did an amazing job. Okay, click it for one second, Jason, really, really quick. And just go to like, the third, fourth page, it has like kindergarten. Yep, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. See, and then it starts, like, they took their five attributes and here's what it looks like, for example, in kindergarten, and just a couple of pictures. And then it goes, here's what it may look like in first grade. I think that's the next, between the visit in the fall and when they come back and send out. This is some really good PR that is aligned with what Jason's done with school improvement plan. And all it is, is tying it together. All the work that he's done on the school improvement plan and all the work the board's done. But how do we have that shared vision among all three schools under the ER nine program? So that's something I thought, if we could do that, that's something to be proud of. So I don't really want to ask for questions because this was just a, like, a quick overview until I get excited about this. Because this is a lot of work that the school has done that may not be, maybe recognized every day, but there's been a lot of work that's been done behind the scenes with this committee and the teachers. And it's important work because when they come, like, there's nothing, there's nothing better than an accreditation visit because it will be publicized and that doesn't go your way, so to speak. Not that I have any fears, but again, you want to put your best foot forward. So I wanted to present to you some of the work that's been done and some of the necessary that still needs to be done. So I apologize. It's supposed to be quick.
You're fine. I would take just briefly comments, not questions. I agree. We don't want to drill that into too much, but just a brief comment.
I think some of this, the, the core value statements in particular, I think can be mapped to some of the work that's being done in curriculum and in strategic planning very easily. And what jumped out to me in the core values was something that wasn't said. And that is statements I'm familiar with such as eighty percent of our students will be growth targets in whatever and will have XYZ SATs and ABC college acceptances. Because that's not applicable to a hundred percent of students. Whereas these statements, I think, are applicable to number of, a hundred percent of students regardless of where they fit on the academic spectrum.
Thanks for saying that.
All right, any other quick comments?
Thanks, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, we will then move on to item D, end-of-year financial projections.
Oops, I'm not sharing it. Showing it, okay. So in Easton and Reading, we have presented where we are in terms of these three buckets. Health insurance, unexpended funds and recommended end-of-year expenses or expenditures. And we have created the sandbox that we used successfully at the end of last year that we would like to introduce to you again at the end of this month so that we're at least familiar with some of the areas next month. Because next month is obviously an important month where we need to make decisions. We do not need to make decisions tonight in these areas, but it's important to talk about kind of what the drivers are, where the pressures are, and some of the decisions that you will need to make at the end of the year. Included in your packet is the budget object summary and also the health report. However, this is kind of the main points for that discussion. So I'm, I'm gonna make this a little bit smaller and start with.
I made it bigger.
Oh, no worries. I'm gonna start with health insurance and just some key points here. Our health benefits reserve balance at the end of April, and still is as of today, is one million, five hundred and forty-four thousand. And we still have a significant portion of our budget intact in two seventy, two seventy-one. And that is one, one million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. So.
Almost the full twelve months.
Which is. Exactly, yep. And so those two numbers together give us our total pool, which is three million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. April claims were at two hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven. Sarah, Vicky and I have estimated where we think May and June are going to land, which we think will be slightly higher than April based on a, a couple of factors. We've looked at kind of the employee contributions and. at kind of the employee contributions and fee offset, and that's a positive of eighty-five thousand. And so our estimated expenses between now and the end of June are four hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and forty-five. And obviously, that is subject to change. So when you consider the total pool, what's in the reserve, what's in, what's encumbered in 270, 271, you can see the remaining balance of almost three million dollars. So there's a significant amount of money left over in health insurance. And Vicky and Sarah were talking today, and we've actually earned since July, sixty thousand dollars in interest with money that we've had in our reserve. And so...
So we could run the entire health program next year without a dime coming from the fiscal '25 budget?
Yes, well...
Unless it goes very sideways compared to where we are.
Right. And so, we, in the red column here, we know of some outstanding expenses, and we've already encumbered two percent of our operating budget this year for capital. We have set aside or encumbered approximately a hundred thousand dollars in pension. You, I believe you will probably encumber the two percent into capital again, as you've done in years past. You may or may not need to set aside a hundred thousand dollars into pension. I'm sure you'll talk about the health of the pension fund. And over in the green column, you've got kind of, if we wanted a health reserve target of approximately two million, two point two million, then we would have to transfer seven hundred and fifty-four thousand to meet that target. As opposed to where we ended last year, which was around six hundred thousand, and you transferred up to one point eight million into the reserve out of end-of-year funds. And so, we would actually be at a negative balance right now if we didn't play around with some of these variables. And obviously, the largest driver is really health insurance. So Sarah, why don't you take us through a couple of these planned expenditures, and then I'll take you through some...
Jason, can you walk through that seven hundred and fifty-four thousand again? Because I thought we had a balance going into next year of two point nine, so we'd be taking out seven hundred?
So if you decided that you wanted to have a target of two point two million, and your, your remaining balance is two point nine theoretically, then if you took, if you took the amount, if you just, if you said, okay, I wanna take that two point nine, and I wanna, I want us to start with two point two million of the encumbrance, you would need to apply, you would then, you would then need to apply those funds in 270, 271 to the, to your, to your current balance in order to make sure that you started the year with those funds.
You'd be pulling seven hundred out of the one point eight that's sitting there, leaving you with one point one left?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because the bottom line there in blue suggests that we credit that whole one point eight, but we haven't credited it yet.
And that's the key point that we talked about today. If we've encumbered one point eight million, we obviously don't need to encumber one point eight million. We've never not encumbered it once we've encumbered it. And so...
Right, you could theoretically release the encumbrance, then have a conversation about the target at the end of the year.
That's right.
Yes, that's exactly, that's exactly right.
Okay. And if you release the encumbrance and only, and transfers seven hundred and fifty-four thousand as, because you want, that's your target, then you obviously increase your unexpendee funds.
Right, right.
If you do not, then you have, then you cannot, if you do not, then you cannot realize the rest of those...
Right, you can't use any, you can't do anything else with it.
Correct.
So here are some expenditures that we anticipate in terms of retirement stipends and substitutes. But really, the key decision is releasing that encumbrance, deciding where, what you're putting in the health reserve. And then there's some additional funds, or some additional decisions that we are gonna talk to you more about making as end-of-year expenses, which, for example, central office, right now, we are at negative one hundred and forty-eight thousand...
Correct.
In central office, so we're asking each of the three boards to contribute fifty thousand dollars to bring that back to zero. We would like to spend approximately fifty thousand dollars on phase one of a kind of painting interior of Joe Barlow. You know, we, we are spending, we did the same thing in Eastern or Reading, where we, we're setting aside end-of-year funds for painting. We don't have a plan yet for exactly which wings we're planning, but we will probably take that kind of approach. We're gonna tackle, you know, A section, B section, or the library, and so on, and so on. If you've walked into the front of Joe Barlow High School, right underneath the letters, the main entrance, you'll see some discoloration of the facade. And so we're looking at some improvements to... Mike, do you wanna explain what kind of, what kind of finish that is?
So it looks like stucco, concrete, masonry, but it's really a product, it's called, the trademark is drive it, but it's called ephes. It's basically foam that has a mesh on it, and then it has a coating that, you know, gives the appearance of stucco. So we have that on quite, there's a lot of linear feet of that facade that run around the building. And what's hap, what happens over the years is it gets, you know, mildew forms from behind once, once the ephes gets a small pinhole in it, moisture gets down behind it, and then there's a foam board that's back there, and it just holds the moisture and nothing gets out, and so you get mildew. So in order to address that, it has to be resealed, and it's, it's almost like recoating it. So if you thought of it as masonry, it's like, you know, re-stuccoing the whole thing over, and it comes in various colors. So, you know, we would match the color that is currently on there. But that number there is a placeholder. Please don't hold me to that number. I have a guy coming on Thursday to take a look at it. And just so that, you know, for clarity, we knew that we had an issue in the front of the building. We saw that a little bit towards the end of last year. Going into this year, we could see the black, you know, kind of peeking through. But over the course of this year, it's kind of grown exponentially around the building, like, really quickly, meaning that there's pinholes, you know. It all kinda ages together, and so that's what's happening. So that's why the item is appearing now, because obviously, if you address it before that water gets in and starts to cause other damage behind the surface, it's cheaper, easier to address. But that number is just a placeholder. It's not anything else.
Can I just ask you a quick question about that? So if they're just, they're gonna just reseal it? Is that the intention?
So, so what they'll do is they'll, they'll kill the mildew behind there, and then they'll reseal the surface so that the moisture doesn't get down in there.
Is it possible though to kill all the mildew behind something?
Yeah.
And the other item...
Full detailed description about that.
Okay.
I got that.
The other item in the green column G and H is security. And if you remember, not at the end of last year, at the end of the year previously, we addressed security around inner buildings. We looked at vestibule entrance ways, access controls. We looked at red button door locks and push-button locks in all of our classrooms across the district. And obviously, we'll go into executive session, talk a little bit more about security, but that area, we'll look at, again, access controls, linking access controls to cameras, to our cloud system, and a few other pieces as well. So we've, we've got some money set aside that might be nice to talk about security.
Jason, am I missing from this spreadsheet what the projected bottom-out number is that we're drawing down from in the green column?
The, what you would be drawing down from would be what you decide to not encumber from that, from the healthcare line.
Everything else is projected to zero. We're just playing with that one point one.
We're just playing with that, we're just playing with that, yes.
Okay.
Just a quick question on the security. Again, without going into the details, but you know, it's a nice round number there. And again, we'll go into executive session to talk about what's in there, but has that number been built up from particular items you're looking to spend on, or is this just kind of a swag number?
No, so that's, that's a fairly accurate number based upon estimates that we've already...
You looked at some items in hand?
But it's, it's obviously a round number. It's not a specific number at the present time. We did look to try and incorporate some of the board's directions relating to the kind of blue light phone idea and that kind of stuff as well, which is not built into that number. So, you know, that number's just kind of...
We can have a separate session to talk about what all is in there and what's on the wish list, but I just wanted to make sure we've done some bottoms up, looking at what's in there as opposed to just throwing a number in there.
Yeah, no, that one is, is based on proposals that we have in hand. I just looking to build on the other.
And then I, my other comment, I share kind of, Chris' concern on the view here of the format. I think this is great, but I, for me, it would be easier, I think, in the sandbox for the next time, if we have, you know, what, what is the unencumbered amount, right? What's our unexpendee, basically, right? And so, using what we've got here, but what is that number? And then, you know, we have our buckets, so we normally put things into capital insurance, pension, or get back to the town. So having those four buckets set up that we can play around with that in the sandbox. And then any recommended end-of-year expenditures is kind of another item that we draw down on the unencumbered, or sorry, the unexpendee, and any other outstanding bills. So we can just basically say, this is the number, there's some other things that are gonna hit, here are your three or four buckets that you've got left, let's play around with that.
I will unencumber, I will unencumber those funds...
Yes.
So that you can, so that you can guess, you can see that.
I would favor releasing all of those funds from encumbrance, and sort of starting with, we're at one point eight million dollars. And from the one point eight, are we taking the two percent, or is the two percent already factored?
The two percent is already factored. The two percent is already, so here's what's...
That's above the line. We're at one point eight, pension, and we're working down.
So here's what's currently encumbered, is all of your, all of your insurance is currently encumbered.
Yep.
Two percent is already encumbered, and pension is already encumbered.
At a hundred, right.
Right.
So those are the three, so I will take those, and I will, and then you'll notice that in your budget object summary as well, so that you'll be able to see, you'll be able to really see that at the same time. But I wanted, I wanted to give you a sense for where it was.
Yeah, this is, this is good, because the question always comes up, how much should we already put into pension, and where do we need to top it off that? So...
Right, just seeing graphically, and it is super helpful. So Rough Cocktail, not Mad suggests it's about eight hundred thousand dollars that's not accounted for here.
Seven fifty-four. Yeah, I, yes, I agree, yes.
Okay. And so then, and a follow-on question, because we are limited in application of two percent into capital, are there items on the capital plan, like what Mike talked about last month about doors and what have you, that some of this could be applied to and get encumbered into this year's operating, so we're not handcuffed with our carryover?
If that is the board's, if that would, if you would like to see that for next month for the, for decision-making sort of menu bar, that is the direction that we will move.
I'd like to see choices that include, yes, we've parked eighteen months of money into health insurance, or we are applying towards a punch list that we have, or returning it back to town. Like, what's the decision, basically?
But I don't think in the, if we decide to go the full two percent into capital, I don't think we need to know at this point, like, where, where's it going?
But you do, because you have another eight hundred thousand dollars that you've got at your mark. Otherwise, you lose it.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, what you'd like to see are the things that, that we had talked about, some things that are, that are capital items that are on the plan, some things that we had talked about that are not here, and you'd like to see that as a list?
Right, like, a twenty-five thousand dollar capital project on some doors that we can pay with this operating money, instead of taking it out of capital where we're limited in what we can put into capital.
Got it.
I'd rather carry over a hundred percent of what we can carry over.
Understood.
Okay. And, and I guess...
And obviously, the trick for Sarah and Mike, unfortunately, is we'll need invoices of things to encumber before June 30th, if we're gonna go that route, so.
Absolutely.
And just one other suggestion. This would be an ideal finance and operations subcommittee agenda to explore, to go deep into some of these areas, rather than, and then to provide a high level.
And the other item that we might, or there might be more of that, but things that in the budget cycle that we took off, such as the press box, if that's something we wanna take a look at and revive, or to say now we're done with that, we don't need to put it in, we'll deal with it later years. So I don't know, again, if there's anything that we took off in the budget process that Mike wanted to look at, that we could squeeze in as well. I don't think, you know, necessarily, I'm not even like, spin down.
Right.
I'm not looking to go in fire sale.
Just to, just to understand what the options would be, and to use it as a way to help us prioritize.
So we use it wisely, like, if paying is the best decision versus something else we cut out of the budget, then, you know...
That's why we developed the sandbox. The only, the issue with the sandbox this year as opposed to previous years is that we've got that health insurance encumbered at one point eight, and it's just, that's the driver. You tell us to unencumber that, and we can, we can add items to D and G based on what you've said.
If you, if you scroll a little bit further in that spreadsheet, there's, there's, there's a bit of an identification of what we had talked about, and that I will formalize, I will put that into a more formal sense, and then we'll, we'll add that in. But those are some of the things that we had, that we had talked about during the budget process.
Okay. My last request in that sheet that we're setting up in the sandbox would be in the reserve, what, because we always get the question, what's our percentage that we're keeping in there? So how many months or years or whatever? So if we could have that calculation, you know, readily there, that we can see.
Sure, yep.
And if we had, you know, a couple hundred thousand, what are we doing in months of reserve?
And that's months of actual claims experience, or much of board's obligation for claims experience, considering different numbers?
I'll leave that up to whatever makes the most sense to see there, as you're building the model.
It would have to be board's contribution, because otherwise...
Yeah, I think the suggestion of having the subcommittee meeting to do a deeper dive would be really, would be really helpful.
So more to come on end of year, but we'll develop a sandbox and take your direction.
Sounds great. All right, with that, then we will move on to item E, nest building project update. And I think for this one, since everybody, I think was at, previous or listening in, that we make this up, and we've lost the public in there.
You have to use the sheet, right?
Yes. So maybe we do quickly go through the sheet at a high level, just because we do have people watching, video that we didn't have potentially earlier, but probably don't need to spend a whole lot of time since the board's already heard everything.
Okay, great. I think we answered the question on item number one, which was, do we need an RFP, or can we utilize the EZIQC system? And according to existing policies and council, we can continue to use EZIQC in certain areas, and we'll continue to do so. We talked a little bit about finalizing the nest building project, and we were optimistic at the beginning of this enterprise that we could potentially start the work and finish the work over the summer. And it's more likely that we will not complete the work by the end of this summer, and with, there's still some decisions that we need to make. The board asked us to get some more information concerning the wastewater component estimate, and Mr. D'Agostino submitted the project to EZICQ, and we are getting some preliminary information. One thing we learned is that a civil engineer is going to have to develop the scope of the project, and once we have the price proposal, then we will work with EZICQ to identify price and bring that information back to the building committee, and that timeline is approximately three to four weeks. The board also asked us to enter... The board also asked us to enter, uh, or to request a price proposal using the EZICQ process for actually building, uh, the nest building, and so we've submitted that into the queue. And the contractor will be able to provide a more accurate price proposal based on that information, and we'll bring that back to the building committee. That's also estimated at approximately three to four weeks. A member of the community and, um, through our nest, uh, stakeholder meeting that we had, there were a few suggestions. Uh, one suggestion was to get more information about the wastewater, uh, system. And another suggestion was to, um, look at the redesign or, or looking at the roof structure and to get more of an angled pitch. And so we have some preliminary designs, and the board tonight during the committee recommended that we also submit that. In fact, we learned that Mr. D'Agostino has already submitted what that would look like through the EZIQC process of, um, getting a price proposal on what would it look like if we tweaked our design and increased the pitch. And so we talked a, a little bit about that. And finally, all of these decisions and data points will have to be, um, brought back to the building committee and to the board, and you'll have to make some decisions on the, uh, the wastewater component, the building component, and the consideration for the difference in the, in the, in the pitch and the roof, um, and so more to come. And that's really what we talked about in the committee.
Jason, just one thing to add on item number two. It was mentioned, I can't remember who mentioned it, maybe it was you, Gwen, uh, that, uh, Mr. Santangeli had done some due diligence to understand that there actually wouldn't be a negative impact on the sports teams in the fall if the building, you know, is unable to complete in the summer as, as his projection. It's still okay. That, you know, football and soccer, yeah, like they can, they can.
I don't think no negative impact was the statement, but, but could be, possibly could be worked with.
He can work around.
They can work around it.
He can work around.
They can work around it. Good. But I think that's important to mention because, you know, we, we shouldn't all be under this.
Don't let negative impact on the boosters, but.
Yeah, wow, you know, yeah.
All right, so just quickly, since again, um, all the board members were either in the previous meeting or present here in the, uh, combined, uh, FNO and building projects, so i- any other final comments or questions on this one topic? All right. And with that, we'll move into the last item, which is formation of STEM building project special committee. Um, so this is just more of an informational thing for the public. Um, we, now that the, uh, budget's been approved from the referendums, um, we do have money in there to start looking at the renovations to the building, um, design, uh, and curriculum for the STEM. So we wanted to get a committee started, a special committee started around that project for, um, you know, how we start looking at the money that we've set aside, uh, for the, uh, design engineering of the space. Um, so I've asked board members if they're interested in participating in that special committee to let me know. Um, we'll also look to add, um, uh, some community members in there as well as, uh, some representatives of the, uh, administration staff. Um, so if you're, again, if you haven't responded to me, or if you have a community member that you think might be a good fit for that, please let me know.
I would say that, um, I would be against forming a special committee, and I would, I would not support that.
All right, and any particular reason?
I don't think it's necessary to have a special committee. I don't think the amount of money allocated is sufficient to warrant the infrastructure around a board public agency committee. I think the work around the STEM facility side can be handled with administration, the existing facilities committee. It's within the scope of that charge, and I think that the curriculum side can be handled on the curriculum side because, committee, because that's within the scope of its charge.
So I'm noting, um, I don't think this committee, again, will look at what we charge it, uh, but I don't think curriculum would be part of it, because I do agree that curriculum is in the curriculum committee.
In, in your preface, you said it would look at curriculum for the STEM project, so.
Uh, the only, sorry, um, the, the reason I was thinking of curriculum is what to, what would be the uses of the space from a curriculum perspective, if they're thinking about doing robotics or, you know, CAD or whatever, what do they need in that space from a curriculum perspective, but not the actual curriculum? But anyway, we'll form the committee and the charge of that committee to later and noted of that you're objecting to having a committee.
Right, and we can vote and decide whether to have it or not?
And we'll have, so my plan is.
And I would like to know the administration's view on whether a board committee would be helpful or, or hurtful in carrying out the task of spending a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on this STEM project.
All right, so, um, so in June, we'll have respective members for that committee, and we'll bring it here to the board to, you know, formalize and vote on if we wanna move forward with the committee or not. My plan is to have that so we can get, if we, if we do decide to do it.
So is it the board's, is it the board's preference then that the administration may not proceed with plans for the space over the summer until the board considers whether to have a committee or not, and we're telling the administration not to do any work on it? Because I'd like them to be doing work immediately on the money that's being allocated for July.
So again, um, they could start in July, uh, on the project, uh, as far as the room that needs to be retrofitted and all that. So again, my intent is in June to create a committee, figure out what's the charges, so it's, again, just looking at the engineering and that aspect of it, um, or also including the money to do the retrofit of the, the two rooms. So we need to sort that, but that's why I'd like to get that sorted in June so there's clear direction for the administration.
I thought we didn't have a fields and facilities committee anymore. Isn't that absorbed into FNO?
So, so we'd be forming a committee in June to then have a conversation about how to carry out a project over the summer. That committee would be bound to make a recommendation back to the board. The board would have to vote to direct the administration to do something, which my understanding is limited basically to tearing down a wall and building some storage. So I, I, it feels like a lot of, a lot of process to get in the way of a project that may not get done over the summer.
It could also be that we don't put in the charge, the tearing down of the wall piece of it, they can go and do that piece, and we wanna look at the bigger piece and the longer term, uh, in the engineering piece of it.
It's not just the one or two rooms. I mean, eventually, it's a, it's a much bigger whole STEM area, it's STEM Academy project. It's not just one, one hundred and thirty thousand dollar project.
Well, we only have approved the hundred and sixty K of the current budget, and we don't have a capital project, so is it, is it too premature? I don't wanna handcuff the administration for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, right? But if we're talking about a larger project, if you will, that, I think, I don't wanna rush forming a committee, right? I'd rather run it through FNO just, just because we don't wanna, for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we're gonna need a committee. It's just gonna slow everything down, but if we're talking about a bigger project, then I think that I would prefer we just have that discussion at the board level before deciding to have a committee.
Which again, we'll have on the June, um, so again, if we wanna have a committee so that we don't decide in June, we're gonna have a committee, and then we have to wait till July or August to be informed to slow things down for the summer, and also with the charge of that committee. So we'll put it on to the June agenda. Um, again, this was just for people to understand if you, you know, give people's thoughts back and a look on how we wanna handle this, since we do have the money approved now.
Okay, I, I think there's a, a little bit of a special sort of circumstance here, because we do have the sort of curricular as well as the sort of, the sort of buildings side of things that need to come together. So at least for the large project, I envision there does need to be a, a sort of, a special group coming together, sort of representatives from both, both, um, both sides, because it, it does take a lot to find the mix. Um, I really don't wanna handcuff, um, the administration for, you know, the spend of the one sixty or, you know, a portion of the one sixty to, to go do work that, you know, that could get done this summer. Um, but I also don't, wanna make sure we're not doing throwaway work, right? I don't think anyone here wants to spend a dime that is like, okay, now undo that, you know, the next year. Um, my impression is that Dr. McKinnon has a vision for, for that. Like, I, I think it's, it's important that we're including the, the appropriate stakeholders and people with subject matter expertise and, and all of that. Um, I wonder if that can happen in a, a sort of less formal way for the, the sort of summer work. But, um, I, I don't know that I'm sort of settled on, oh, we should have a committee, we shouldn't have a committee immediately.
Can I, can I add a comment? Um, we divided this work into kind of, and I don't know whether this was useful now, but it seemed to be useful when we did the budget process, in kind of more short-term work versus more long-term work. And we, I know we allocated approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the project or, or for getting the project off the ground, but we allocated approximately half of that money, and we had a diagram of, um, the, 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 that particular area of the wing, that wing of the, the building, kind of divided into segments, and we identified kind of a short-term fix that we can make over the summer that would, um, uh, enable us to look at the current audiovisual room, and that's where there were some walls, and see if we can, uh, open up that space so that it can, um, help reorganize and perhaps, um, enable the current robotics classroom, uh, and we talked about moving the three D printers and potentially the CNC machine and so on. But the short-term fix would be to create a space versatile enough so that if we did create a long-term plan, it would be, we could utilize that space in the long-term plan. And the long-term plan was to study and to get input from experts, um, about what the long-term vision would be around the rest of the space, approximately seventy percent of the space. So we're really looking at twenty-five percent of the space and about half the money to make a short-term fix. I think having some experts and some stakeholders have some conversations around what the long-term vision looks like is really important. Whether it's a board committee or not a board committee, I'll leave that up to you. Um, we have, Mr. D'Agostino and I have looked at kind of that space, the short-term vision, and we feel confident that we can make some improvements that will only help our current situation and not hinder a future plan. And we would need to make, um, some arrangements for that short-term vision pretty soon, to line up a contractor and, um, to get that work started and so that it wouldn't have to be, uh, it would be done over the summer.
So again, that's the intent for the June discussion. Uh, we'll have it on the agenda, um, so that we can sort out, get clear direction to the administration having the board, either in the short-term, long-term, both, we need a committee, or it's gonna go to FNO. That way we get all organized, project needed going in July, whatever aspect we decide. Okay, so with that, then we'll move on to the next item, public comment. Seeing there's no number of the publics left. We'll move on to item ten, uh, are your just about. Any board member comments?
Yes, I just would like to say one thing. Um, I would like to publicly thank the, uh, Eastern Learning Foundation. They just had a golf tournament, uh, yesterday, and it was really, really well attended, attended. And, uh, we raised a good amount of money, um, and a lot of it is earmarked for Joe Barlow, so, uh, we're happy to report that. And, um, and thank you for the support, and our superintendent was one of our golfers.
Do you have golf pitchers?
I do have a golf pitcher.
Was that joy or rage?
I sounded like you were having a good time.
Well, not like the golf game.
All right, very good. Any other board member comments? All right, seeing none, motion to adjourn. Karen, the second.
I'll second.